Ladies and gentlemen, viewers at home, begin the regular school committee meeting of June 7th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Mr. Stevens, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
I wouldn't. I would like our students from Rhingold to assist me.
There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We move on to school committee members and student reports. School committee chair report. I have nothing at this time. Mr. Stevens, resource subcommittee.
Nothing at this time, nothing school building at this time, but I've asked Mr. Shalafu to schedule a meeting for next week.
Thank you. Policy committee, Mr. Horgan.
Nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time. Any questions? Seeing none, student support committee, Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Nothing new at this time.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, school personnel committee. They have nothing to report at this time, nor for the executive committee, and that brings us to our favorite part of the school committee meeting, our student representatives and their reports.
Okay, we just wanted to do a big congratulations to the class of 2021. They've officially graduated. We'd like to thank them for all their hard work throughout the whole high school experience, through elementary and middle school. We really hope that whatever path they pick in life and career path, they have great success, and that if you want to watch it online, there is a link to see with FATV. Then we'll be passing on to Andrea.
All members of the class of 2022, 2023, and 2024 will be taking MCAS during this final week of school. The freshmen will take science MCAS, and the sophomores and juniors will take both the English and math tests.
You want to note that all students should return materials for MCAS every single day, and they want everything that is material for the class turned in by June 11th. And June 11th is also the make-up day for those that are missing MCAS.
Students should plan to return their Chromebooks for the summer so the IT team can make sure that they have everything up to date. There may be a possibility that some students can keep their Chromebook over the summer. However, the IT team still needs to evaluate them no matter what. With this being said, that means June 8th, after the freshmen are done taking their science test, they are going to return their MCAS, I meant they're going to return their Chromebooks. And then on June 10th, sophomores and juniors will return their Chromebooks after completing MCAS.
Also like to note that all the students that are doing makeup on June 11th will turn their Chromebooks in on June 11th. Then we're also offering on June 10th, which is this Thursday, the second dose on vaccine clinic. The first dose happened in May, and we'd like to thank all those that have taken the initiative to get vaccinated. And now after this, there will be many students who will be fully vaccinated, so very happy for them, and make sure that you've done the consent form and have everything up to date.
Friday, June 11th, has a few important things to note. First, it's going to be an early release day. So at the high school, students will be dismissed at 1:23 with the normal busing service. Also, on June 11th, the final grades close, so students can submit work until Friday. And then at this time, quarter four will be closed for all additional assignments. Students can speak to teachers all week after MCAS about the process to return items, complete missing work, and finalize assignments.
There is a summer programming happening over the summer for all students at different grade levels, and there's many different things that can happen, from AP boot camps to driver's ed, and there's so much more. And if you have any questions about this, we'd like you to reach out to Mrs. Hytman and Mr. Steve Lowney.
So the final thing we have to note is the regular spring sports season has come to an end for both the lacrosse teams as well as the track and field team. However, on a positive note, the baseball team has made it to playoffs and will host Watch You Sit tomorrow night at 4:00. That is all we have for tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. By the way, welcome Rhingold parents and students. And Principal Mercado, thank you for joining us tonight. We kept the place nice and toasty warm for everyone, so we would just make sure that... We're trying to go for a tropical thing, you know. It's a brand-new system, and we're still trying to work the bugs out. I got my facilities director, who through the magic of computers, is telling me he's trying to get online because I think he can make whatever adjustments. I hope he can anyway, but anyway, moving on. Approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting of May 17.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes from May 17, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see no one in opposition. It is approved. Thank you. Executive session not at this time. Communications, anyone wishing to?
A quick one.
Yes?
So exciting to have Rhingold here. I'm so excited to have... So exciting that the barriers are falling.
I'm sorry, it's the heat.
So I, my communication is, I know we're going to talk about graduation, but it was amazing and moving, and those of us who had children, as I was someone who had a child graduate, are just overwhelmed with, you know, this amazing thing that happened. So all of you at Rhingold, we look forward to seeing you cross the podium, not too soon though. But my communication is this, after 13 months of pandemic and no pet therapy in the schools, we have four regular volunteers for B-positive therapy pets, and they have, just since school has opened, volunteered more than 26 hours. 26 hours, mostly at Rhingold and at Longsio. And on this Wednesday, we're going to be at South Street. But very exciting to have therapy pets back in schools, as well as the therapy pet goats that are currently temporarily in residence at Rhingold. So that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Ms. Craig. Public comment, and is anyone signed up for public comment? None?
None.
Mr. Superintendent, okay. So that moves us into the superintendent's report. Mr. Jokel.
Okay, thank you. We have a large contingent here from Rhingold Elementary, and we have our community scientist Lori Stone, Principal Albert Mercado, and Assistant Principal Justin Sparks, along with our district nurse director Pam Rivers here with us. So I'd ask Lori Stone to bring the Rhingold team of community scientists to the podium.
Well, thank you. First, I'm going to have my participants introduce themselves by their names and what grade they are in, because we wanted to show the school committee how easy swabbing is. So we're going to start right here with Nathan, or go ahead, Nathan. What grade are you in?
Nice.
That's Kyla, and she's in first grade. Hi, Markell.
My name is Markell, and I'm in first grade.
Hi, Austin. I'm in fourth, and I'm in kindergarten.
My name is Landon, and I am in kindergarten.
Good job. So right now, we have about 80% of this summer program of our students in the building, learning. And out of that 80%, we have about 70% who are swabbing. So what our sassy swabbers do on Mondays, we have grades K, 1 and 2 swabbed every Monday. And on Wednesday, we have grades 4 and 4 swabbed. So what I would like to do today is we're going to, our sassy swabbers demonstrate on our swabbing techniques, and then we can go over the steps for you. What's our first step, friends?
Hand sanitizer.
Hand sanitizer. We're going to get hand sanitizer real quick. First step, no, thank you. This is what we do. We go around and get our students prepared for nice and clean hands. What's our second step, swabbers? We what? We open our swabs that are cute, like in the, there's only one end, and that is soft. And we open them like they what?
Cheese sticks.
Cheese sticks. Or bananas, and I like cheese sticks because they look more like cheese sticks. What's our next step? After we open it like a cheese stick?
We pull down our mask.
We pull down our mask and we what? We do four circles.
In each nostril.
In each nostril. So ready, one, two, three, four. Good job. And what's our next step? This is my favorite part.
Crank it, crank it, flip it side down.
Flip it side down. This is our medical term.
Medical, yes.
It is. Good job, friends. Flip it side down. Good job, Markell. Markell gives him side, so he knows the facts. So now I have all our swabs safely in our two labeled school committee, and it has a barcode on it. And now we scan into the computer and send up to concentric. We have a courage comes and picks up our swabs, and then they send us our results. We always wish for negative, because we don't want a positive. And then after we put it in, what do we do? Hand sanitize? And then what's our last step? They get stickers. And that's it. That's our sassy swabbers. And the students are amazing. We have kids from kindergarten to fourth grade in our building for our swabbing. It's so simple and easy. And I'm glad we can do it because it's keeping our community and our Ringle community safe.
Awesome.
Thank you. It's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Great job, guys. Great job.
For our friends. Oh, you have a question? I cannot ask that. You can want to ask the superintendent, John.
What's the question?
Take your mask.
Take your mask.
You must know you're going to let fifth graders interrupt.
Fifth graders?
Fifth graders. Valid question. Maybe in the future, maybe in the future. We're looking at something.
We have another question.
Oh, the sticker.
That's right. That's important. Lady of business.
That's...
I have, I have a, not a question, but, well, I do have a question. I know Mrs. Mistone has won an enormous award, and I'm wondering if one of the Rhingold... I, we're going to shine a light on you, Lori. If one of the administrators could explain what the award is and how many people, you know, how many other people were in the competition. Because she is not just the Rhingold sassy swabber community scientist. She stands above many, many others.
Just, I guess to clarify, out of all the schools that are doing swabbing, Lauren was selected, I'm sure based on her demanding personality too, that's not going to do it. But she was able to be selected and featured. It was great to see Rhingold Elementary School's publicity across all schools in the nation. She was the featured community scientist, and they did a nice spread, a news article. It was great publicity on the school. But I also want to give Lauren credit because a lot of our teachers, and I have a point, where they are comfortable doing the swabbing in their classrooms themselves. There are so many of our students doing it to help us sort of take the process. Our teachers at Ryanville Elementary School are now comfortable to process due to the training. The students feel comfortable that they're doing it. And the students did a great job. They wanted to participate. They said, I want to do this, though, you know, we heard we had guests.
Swabbers, yes.
We had another community scientist, Mr. Jokel, that dressed up in a costume.
Yes.
I don't know if the stone, she didn't know to do that, but I don't know. But he went around, and I remember students confused him with...
From Back to the Future.
Back to the Future.
Yes, one of them, she had asked him at kindergarten, she's like, can you send me back inside? Do a round.
Back to the Future. But the stone, congratulations, making for helping our school.
More applause. That moves the air around a little thing.
Yeah. Something for each one of the members of the school committee. You can come up, you can go around, get a water bottle from Rhingold.
Thank you so much.
Not sure if it's a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Please. Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, you will be having to know that the name of the school is Rhingold.
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
All right, I like that. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions for anybody? No? Thank you, thank you, boys and girls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nicely done, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
How are you?
Go.
You did a great job. It was so, it was great.
Very easy. That's great.
Some of the voices on those kids.
The kids actually have a sense of safety that that brings them, knowing that they're a little tested, you know? They actually look at that.
I don't know if it's appropriate to ask that.
Right, right, yeah.
But I'm just glad that, you know, maybe I can, I can hope.
So nice. Did you, did you talk to her about she's going to visit the council?
The very last part.
Yeah.
Thank you.
She's staying in the school today?
I don't know if you can. Oh, yeah, so many people. Hi, Pam.
I'll wave to you, too.
Anyways.
All right, we go, moving on with the, with the agenda?
Sure.
Well, that's yours, Mr. Superintendent. FY22 budget, final reading.
Before we move forward with the final reading of the FY22 budget, I would just ask FATV if I can have Zoom screen sharing privileges. I'd like to just show a brief, three-minute video from the graduation Friday night.
Oh, good.
We witnessed a, an act of generosity by one of our graduates, which I think deserves sharing with the school committee and also with the community at large. Coincidentally, Channel 5 will be running a story highlighting Verta Teta's act of generosity tonight. So, let's see if I can share my screen here.
Now, it's my privilege to introduce our class speaker, Verta Teta. I actually first met her in fourth grade at South Street Elementary School, where she was and remains always ready and eager to lend a helping hand. Seeing her grow and reach outstanding academic and community achievements has truly been a gift. Through all her accomplishments, she has remained humble and kind, which is why I'm glad I have this opportunity to brag about her. Verta will be attending Harvard University this coming fall. The culmination of a goal she set since freshman year, maybe before then, and plans to major in chemistry with the pre-med track. There is no doubt in my mind that she will continue to accomplish outstanding feats during her time there.
The General Excellence Prizes are awarded at Fitchburg High School's graduation to one senior boy and one senior girl who have outstanding academic achievements and have made the most of themselves while making major contributions to the educational and co-curricular programs at the high school. The General Excellence Prize winner also receives the George K. Progen Scholarship. Initiated in 2004, this award is a $10,000 annual scholarship graciously established by the Progen family in memory of George K. Progen, an alumnus of Fitchburg High School. The award is renewable annually for four years of undergraduate college education. I am very honored to announce this year's recipients, Verta Teta and Zachary Scott.
I am so very grateful for this, but I also know that I am not the one who needs this the most. And knowing my mom went to community college and how much that was helpful, I would be so very grateful if administration would be, would consider giving the General Excellence Scholarship to someone who's going into community college, because I know it is such a great honor, but I also know that I am not the most in need of it.
A well-deserved standing ovation. Let me adjust my volume here. For an extremely generous act by Verta, designating the, the award that she gave to those students who have more of a need than, than she does. And, and just for everyone's benefit, if they don't know already, Verta will be attending Harvard University next year, I think majoring in chemistry and with her goal of being a doctor. So we just want to thank Verta for her generosity and really shows what, what kind of students Fitchburg High School has and Fitchburg Public Schools has. As we have these two, two student representatives here tonight, we're proud of all our students here and what they can do and will do in the world. So, thank you. So now we get to, I'll say, the, the final leg of the budget season, the FY22 final reading. And I believe Mr. Shalafu has already queued the presentation. So tonight's update from Craig really represents just some new information, a little bit of a summary of what was presented last time, and the goals that we're trying to accomplish, looking ahead for next year. We have a lot of resources that otherwise we wouldn't normally have had. But just to kind of keep a bigger picture in mind, our enrollment, it was, was down, is down 170 students as of October 10th. And we do have some support from the Student Opportunity Act and also the ESER stimulus pools. Some of those fundings are very targeted and restricted. And one thing that we try to do is put together a budget that will be sustainable for when the stimulus money concludes in, in three years, in school year '24. So I'll just get it started with the, the overall summary, because I think what's important for all of us, money is the, the fuel that helps, you know, pay our staff salaries, keeps our buildings open, allows the buses to roll. And over the last year, we've spent a lot of time looking at our why and what our goal is going forward. And really, our goal and theory of action is if all staff, families, and community partners collaboratively identify and remove barriers to personal growth and achievement, then every student will be ready to learn and access high-quality core instruction and social-emotional supports. You'll see again tonight some of the investments that we're making in some of the staffing, that whether it be funded by the city budget or through the ESER funding, that'll help us accomplish for the following goals or commitments. One is the curriculum is accessible and reflective of all our students. And Craig, just go back. Go back. Too fast here. And again, the school committee last month made a vote of support for updating our curriculum. A tiered system of academic and social-emotional support district-wide will be focusing on improving our Tier One instruction, K-12, throughout the district. And we'll be doing some professional development over the summer to help accomplish that. We'll also be doing additional professional development throughout the year, whether it be with outfits like Research for Better Teaching, which is John Saffier, Focus Schools will also be working with us next year, and we'll be looking to implement our diversity recruitment plan as well. And, and really, what's going to help make our students feel successful is that they, they all feel welcome and belonging in our school and that they're able and ready to learn. So... With that, Craig, let's go to the, the numbers aspect.
Thank you, Bob. So as we've discussed throughout the course of this spring, you know, the four pillars of our planning as we move forward. Before I get into some of the numbers, just to reiterate a few of the really important things, obviously, the Student Opportunity Act, which was interrupted by a year because of COVID, we're planning on one-sixth now implementation plan over the next six years. You know, what that has meant for us here in the city of Fitchburg, you know, the FY, the foundation budget, which we've talked about, an increase of almost $3.5 million, an increase in Chapter 70, a little over $3 million. But the impact of that decline of 171 students amounts being $2.4 million. And again, I think also it's important to keep abreast of the ESER grants, what we can use this money for, what we can't use this money for. Obviously, there's significant investments, ESER 2 being $7.4 million and ESER 3 being $16.6 million. So we have lots of targeted, we'll be writing those grants. This will take us out through FY '24. And as we go through the budget process, we keep keeping in, on the horizon, it's FY '25 so that we can be fiscally responsible, so that we're not creating a funding cliff as we kind of enter the, the post-ESER years. This is a slide that we've showed several times, just summarizes what we're looking at for our foundation budget with the increase of $3.4 million. The school budget itself, a little over $3 million. And things to take into consideration highlighted in yellow, also the $1.1 million, which indicates an increase in transportation costs. And then at the bottom of the screen, the $1 million. And that was an increase in the city indirects for benefits and for healthcare. So those had, those numbers had some significant impact on our budgeting and that the city are also looking at the, the shortfall in net school spending. But that's pending adjustments as we go through the summer and into next fall, which will be adjusted as well. Again, just highlighting that drastic decline in our students of 171 students over the last year. And again, this just shows the, the trend in the Chapter 70. Interestingly, FY '20 to FY '21, we're anticipating the Student Opportunity Act to kick in. That would have certainly had an increase in Chapter 70 this past year, but it was a level service budget, if you remember correctly, and that was a $1 million increase from FY '20 to '21. And then the $60.8 million going into FY '22. And again, keeping in mind that that's short of that $2.4 million based on the decline in our enrollment. So we would have seen a much dramatic spike in that Chapter 70 coming into FY '22 had that attendance decline not happened. Again, a kind of a summary that costs that we're looking at are rollover costs for salaries, for lane changes, for positions that were not filled last year, amounting to $860, almost $861,000. And I did mention last time, it's somewhat of an anomaly, but we have almost 60 requests in for lane changes, which typically we're in the 20 to 25 range. So these are, this is something that we need to budget for. Not all of this $200,000 will probably, or not all the staff that have put in for these lane changes will accomplish that goal. And these are the new positions that we have presented to the committee, some being out of city funds. out of city funds amounting to $620,000. And then looking at the ESER-funded positions of one point, almost $1.3 million for a total of 1.9. Again, keeping along those lines of not wanting to outspend our grant, so that when FY25 comes around, that we are being fiscally responsible, that we're not creating a a funding cliff. But these are the positions that we've committed to and requested of the committee to vote on in our budget. And again, as we look into the fine tuning of what that $3 million increase budget this year, we've broken it up by lines. We have four new curriculum director, curriculum director positions at almost $400,000, increase in subpay for $67,000, our step increases, which were noted earlier, $600 and almost $658,000. Because of the way the ESER language is, we can roll all of our professional development into ESER grants, so that saves us and we're able to reduce that line by $100,000. We have set aside nearly a million dollars, a little under a million dollars for negotiations. We are negotiating all six of our contracts. We've added a position at Fitchburg High School. We have a new position in our IT department, department that we're recommending, particularly around cybersecurity. We have noted here the transportation increases of 1.1 million. So when we add this all together, you can see a shortfall of about $600,000. So in order to accommodate that, we looked at our line items. We decreased this year FY20 to the line item for capital $300,000 with the understanding that a major chunk of the ESER grants will be put towards facilities. Anything that has to do with air quality and HVAC can be, can be taken from the ESER grant. And then the instructional line, as I alluded to earlier, $100,000, because those, that spending can also be moved into the grant. So we needed to balance a $600,000 deficit with with the $600,000 increase in those line items. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Shalfo, the VanPul, the new contract with VanPul, that pretty substantial increase. Is there?
The increase is, yes, and that includes in-district sped transportation, out-of-district sped transportation, and the large regular school buses.
So this was a result of negotiations, was a $580,000 increase?
So the transportation increases really goes back to the increase in busing costs, particularly with the ELT program at Longchamp Middle School that caused us to add four buses. Longchamp was always a tier of their own, so by realigning the potential for realigning our start times and adding the Longchamp Middle School back into that, we had to increase our transportation by four to five buses at this point.
That was the extended learning program?
It was.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think important to to really highlight, and this is not something that I've spent time on in our previous presentations, and where we alluded to the $300,000 cut in capital, I thought it was important for us to show some of the things that we have done over the last several years. And here's a list of nearly $6 million of of capital investments that we've had throughout the district. So this is not something that we're setting aside. It's something that we're really highlighting the ESER funding to help support and expand. So here's a number of, including roofs that we've done, you know, most recently at South Street, Longchamp Roof, the windows at Fitchburg High School. So there's lots of substantial investments that we've put into our facilities.
That's great. I think that's great. Anytime you can put a dent in capital needs, that's the way to go.
Yep. And we have, we have many things in the pipeline. You know, here's another half a million dollars of things that that we have slated to start and take place this summer. So we're looking at partial roof replacement at Fitchburg High School. So there's a number of things. And then this, you know, here's a list of of many projects that we have, you know, totaling $2 million. But as we really look at spending the ESER funds over the next three years, you know, there's, there's going to be a significant investment. Many of these, and I think it's important for us to highlight, particularly around our hair management, replacing ceiling tiles that need to be replaced throughout the district. It's, it's difficult at this point to really prioritize this list, because some of it will be taken care of when we do some of the other HVAC upgrades. So for instance, some of the asbestos management will take place as we're doing some of these other projects. So it's not that we're setting them aside, but we know that when we replace the Memorial in the Reingle rooftop vents, that we're going to be also abating material and replacing ceiling tiles. So some of this will actually be folded in into the mix as we continue to work with the ESER funds and our strategic planning. And again, just highlighting, you know, where we were with the coronavirus of $400,000 grant, the original ESER, we have about $1 million remaining, and we'll be spending that down by this September. And then ESER 2 and ESER 3, and again, these are numbers that we've discussed in the past, but are substantial investments in in the city at 7.4 million and 16.6 million. You know, again, looking at where we're going with the ESER, looking at unit ventilator, the unit ventilators, which are what really are exchanging air in in three of our buildings at Reingle, at Memorial, and at South Street Elementary, the Crocker unit ventilators have been previously replaced, Fitchburg High School being newer there in a better situation. And then the two schools, you know, Goodrich Academy and then Longchamp Middle School run on totally different systems, so they don't actually have unit ventilators. So looking at upgrading all of our air handlers, looking at climate controls, so much like you just mentioned, Mayor, that our facilities people can log in from home and turn the heat up and turn the heat down.
Which just happened.
The air conditioning is now on, and that's the type of modernization that we'd like to have throughout the district. Part of that also, as we discussed, that the building envelopes, you know, where are we with some of these other smaller roof projects? Where are we with insulation that that play a major role in this? And again, look at a targeted assistant, and that goes back to speak to the positions that we have advocated for our teachers across the district, increasing, at least at Memorial with a special education teacher, you know, said that investment of $1.2 million in salaries is really targeted at improving instruction and learning across the district. And then, you know, big investment in professional development and really looking at how we can fine tune that to provide our staff with with the targeted professional development necessary to really move our students. And and we know that that really looks at the tiered system, which Superintendent Jokel has highlighted as one of the main pillars that we've discussed throughout this entire process. And that goes to both re-engagement and then looking at the social emotional needs as well as the academic learning loss that's transpired over the last year and a half. So again, it all comes back to this this main slide around what we're targeting, what the pillars are around our curriculum, our tiered system of support, professional development, our diversity plan, welcoming students, and then really highlighting the fact that, you know, moving forward, there may be adjustments to this, because we know, you know, coming back from a pandemic, none of us have actually done that. So we may be adding additional ESER-type positions to our budget that can be covered under the 7.4 to 16.6 million as we move forward. And again, just, you know, caveats to discussions that we've had. We are negotiating all of our contracts. We're not sure what FY23 will bring. Do we get 100 students back? Do we get all 171 students back? But these are really things that we're looking at in balancing equity, access, opportunity, growth, and achievement. As I just mentioned, the need to potentially add additional staffing under the ESER grant. And with that, I'd just like to, the the school committee received the the budget booklet for this year. Updated version will be put on our website that will be accessible to the entire community. And I'd just like to thank my my friend to the right of me, Dr. Renda, for doing an outstanding job, putting together this document and all the work that he has put in. It's, there's, there's a lot of information, not necessarily just about the work that we're doing, but also with hyperlinks that can bring you to other sites that really discuss why we're doing what we're doing and why this budget is so important to us. With that, I would open things up to questions or?
I guess, yeah. And I'll just add on to what Craig mentioned. We tried to, the budget book that was sent out to is a different format, and we tried to make it a little bit more reader-friendly. And I really do have to thank Adam for bringing a different approach to to the budget book. It it needed some updating, and it's a lot more contemporary, but it also has links to all the work that we're trying to accomplish and references a lot of documents, which if we included in in the budget book would probably be, I'll say, maybe 10 times as, as big as it is. But there's a lot of other people who helped put this budget book together. We had people from Grants Department, Cali Cavalo, Karim Favale from Human Resources, Pam Rivers on the nursing side, and also other people who helped put together the graphics and some of the information to make it, you know, easy to understand, because there's a lot of information in there, and we're trying to make it so that people can easily understand that. Ms. Reynolds?
Two things occurred to me. One is I didn't see anything referring to safety and budgets. Will there be any police officers in the different schools? Just, you recall in the past how that was an eminent topic, the safety, and I didn't happen to see anything there. And then I'm wondering if there might not be an emphasis placed on review and see what we've learned through what we've gone through. I mean, not just anecdotally or anything like that, but a serious study of what we've been faced with here in the city.
Sure.
Of course, worldwide, we know, but that we might have a really professional position or ideas or things that we might share amongst ourselves, but might even share nationally.
Sure. So to answer your first question, the school resource officers, we have three. They're actually held, I'll call it, in the indirect spending of the budget. So those salaries are held kind of on the city side of the budget, along with health insurance and retirement expenses. But there are three school resources officers in in the budget that are assigned to our schools.
Where are they located?
Fitchburg High School, Longchamp, and Memorial.
I was just going to say, I think that we're already beginning very, very basic discussions, I know my staff is, and how we're going to systematically look at what we've gone through. I think that's a great idea. That's a great, I think something we move forward, we'll bring the school department in with this as well. You know, what, what, what can we do differently than what we did? Because there was no playbook for this.
Or even identify what it is we've experienced.
But it is the good stuff and the bad stuff, and so we can learn from it.
Right.
And I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, so I think, yeah.
To add to that, we have been, some of us at Central Office have been having meetings with the Department of Ed and private groups like Attuned, who we're working with through the Bar Foundation Leadership Pipeline Grant, and that's exactly what they're doing. They're, they're bringing groups of both teachers, principals, and administration together to find out what has really worked well during this time, so what we can keep to change education moving forward, and what didn't work well, and and why. And they're, they're really trying to have some influence on how we can have that acceleration.
That's one aspect, but the personal, I mean, everybody's been affected.
Absolutely.
And if we might know it as much as we can, you know, it's not squander this, whatever's happened to us.
I think a few, I'll say, easy takeaways are, it made it easier for our staff to collaborate, either within buildings or across the district, and really to meet and get a lot of things done. For example, just the negotiations that we had last year, over the last really 16 months, on memorandums of understandings, we did it all remotely. And we were able to go through two rounds, and now that we're in teacher negotiations, it's seamless, whether we meet in person or online. So that's just one, you know, positive aspect. I think there are a lot of school districts that also, we realize that communicating with parents, now, we don't have to meet with them in person, parents and teachers are more comfortable using technology to meet with parents throughout the day. So whether it be a video conference or a phone call, and going back to our commitments, it really is a team effort to have parents, students, and staff. So technology has has helped us, and, you know, the pandemic, I would say, forced us to rip off that Band-Aid, maybe a little bit faster than we would have otherwise. So there's, I think, a lot of unpacking that, you know, as as Mr. Renda said, we and other, our local communities and across the country are still going through as to, okay, now that we're emerging from the pandemic, what did we learn? And also, what are we going to learn as we emerge from the pandemic, as well as to what the needs of staff and students are? Because I think at some level, as much as there was apprehension about going into the pandemic, maybe there might be a little bit coming out of the pandemic as well. So it's transition, and we just have to keep our ears open, listen, and and see what works and what doesn't. And I think if anything, the last year has taught us is how to be nimble and flexible and adaptive. And I don't, I don't think that's changing. I think the best quote I heard or read over the last few months was, we're, we're entering the next normal. And we're going to continue to try to educate our students the best we can. And now, if anything, the the students probably have more agency than ever. So that's a positive, and it's a challenge, because things have changed so quickly. So we're up for the challenge, and everyone's looking to start their summer vacation on Friday. But I think a lot of staff are also relieved that we're coming out of the pandemic, looking forward to recharging, and and coming back to, again, the next normal.
Yeah, I just, you just mentioned student agency. And Adam, when you were mentioning the stakeholders that you guys are talking to, I just want to make a plug and make sure that you guys are including students on that, whether they're talking about school resource officers, or you're talking about what we've learned from learning methods in the pandemic. I think that kids are the best, or kids are are among the most important of the stakeholders. So we've got all sorts of organizations at the high school where I think kids could get involved and and really be great contributors to those committees. And then if anybody else wanted to comment on that, that's fine. I did have some questions about the budget, so.
I think your comment is right online, Jean, in terms of students getting involved. And I can't remember the exact name of the document from Department of Ed, but really a guidebook for reentry.
Acceleration map roadmap.
Yeah. And, you know, they, they expect school districts to get input from students and parents over the summer as we return.
I would say you should aim to put some of the kids on those committees. They, student members of committees are really helpful.
I just wanted to bring it back to the budget. First off, I, I found this budget really easy to read. I liked the commitments at the front. I liked how the information was arranged. I liked all the building specifics, as well as the generalities at the back. It was really easy to understand. Our, our benefits from the ESER program. So thank you. I know this had to have been an enormous group effort, but it, I really appreciate it, and I've been carrying it around, because I've been posting it, if that's a verb. And I wanted to ask, the, the page that is the 2019 ELA subgroup results, this was really easy for me to read. And as I looked closer, I saw that our, our English language learners, the status for 2019 ELA was, English language learners met or exceeded expectations 24%, 3% exceeding expectations. We go down the column, and we find former EL status, 84% meet or exceed, and 37% exceed. That, that's astonishing. But I, I, I mean, there's like these numbers that reflect this incredible leap of, you know, many times over, the number of students. know, many times over, the number of students improving their skills. I want to light off fireworks. This is amazing and wonderful. And I know from talking to many students at graduation, you know, they, I mean, Verda talked about the struggle and talked about encouraging them and how important resilience is, but here we see the data, and I find that thrilling. So I'm really excited to read this and hope we can continue to celebrate. I think it's going to take a long time, Jean and everyone. I think we'll look at, you know, this time next year, and of course, the media will be celebrating two years, three years, four years, five years, and then we'll be 10, and then down the road, 20. But the long term is the kids in kindergarten, you know, like, they're probably the least affected, but the kids in middle school, you know, that'll be an interesting group to follow. I know that some kids actually enjoyed wearing the mask because they're just at that age of not wanting to be seen. And I, again, doing the pet therapy, I'm having, and our volunteers are having a lot of conversations with kids, and every middle schooler pretty much had mixed feelings about the remote, and they had mixed, but they loved coming back. Like, not a single student in school said to me, "I wish I wasn't here." They all said, "We're so glad we're back." So whatever they went through, like, that middle school on the inside, I mean, again, Janet Craig and Youth Art Awards, I talked to almost every kid there as well. They were so happy to be back. And we owe it to them to kind of, you know, make it easier for the next generation, hating to think about that. But again, I'm, as I talk to residents, we have been so transparent here in Pittsburgh about everything we did and about every single number that came our way, and residents know that. Like, I have a lot, I've had many conversations with residents recently. Residents know we have been very forward and upfront with our struggle and how we have found solutions and how we've worked together, and that is remarkable. But they're really, the English language, former English language learners being at 84%, wonderful.
What I like about the budget is, some budgets, the district will have district commitments, and they will have a budget, and the budget doesn't reflect the district's commitments. Our budget reflects the commitments that we have made, and that's what we need.
Yeah.
And too often, that doesn't happen. We have things we want to do, but we do not support them financially. This budget supports our students and our commitments we have made to them, such as the investment, what we have made in our new reading program at the elementary level. And that's what our budget throughout shows, that it does support our district's commitment to our students and staff.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Go ahead.
All right, so I agree, this budget book was really accessible. Thanks. Everything in one place and really nicely summarized. I was looking at the account descriptions for each of the schools, and, you know, it's always interesting when numbers go down, right? Like, usually all our numbers go up. So on the paraprofessionals in Memorial and McKay, what's behind the drop in that account? And is that part of a focus to not, is it just a population thing? Or what, so what's behind that? And then, two, could you just speak to what mental health professionals are available in each school for the next year? In what capacity? Other than, in addition to guidance counselors, what else is going to be there?
So I can speak quickly to the paraprofessionals. It's kind of a fluid year-to-year. Paraprofessionals move with students, so you may have an influx of one or two in a particular building as either students transition in or they transition out. I know that we had a number of unfilled, I think there were 23 unfilled parapositions last year. So bringing them all back onboard and filling all of those positions, but typically from one school to the next, it's that transitional piece as we have students move in and move out, transition from either eighth grade, you know, to the high school, or coming up to the middle school from the elementaries.
Okay, thank you. And then, what about mental health professionals in each of the schools?
Sure, I can speak to that. So most of our schools now, though there are some guidance counselors in the K to eight, most of our schools have school adjustment counselors, which do have a little bit more expertise as far as dealing with mental health. And we've added a clinical intervention to every building this year. I believe all of those have been filled already, too. So every school will be beginning the year with an additional mental health staff. This does not include clinical interventions that we already have on staff, BCBAs, and also school psychologists. So we are, we are well-staffed and ready to hit the ground running with this, as well as implementing, we'll be in year one of a three-year implementation of a tiered system of social emotional support. So we'll be looking at things like a universal classroom management system. We will be implementing Ruler, I believe, district-wide, if not district-wide, for the K to eights, which is the Yale School of Social Emotional Learning. And we have the Bright Program at Pittsburgh High School and Longchamp currently, and that will, I believe, also be transitioning to Memorial and someone helped me out with this, the Bright Program is a bridge program. So for kids who may not be ready to come back to school right away and be in class or in an overwhelming space, they come into the Bright Program, and we transition them in so that eventually they can be back in a tier-one instruction in a regular classroom setting. So we have a lot, there's a lot up in the air right now, in a good way, that we actually will be meeting with the clinical interventions and adjustment counselors in one of the two PD days at the end of the year here to talk about our tiered system of support and what year one is going to look like, because a lot of the implementation is going to be put on them.
Thank you.
And then, Jean, too, we're going to continue supporting the external partners that come in from outside. We had a lot of those before, pre-COVID, and we're starting to transition those services back into the building. So we'll also have that suite of external partners that we partner with, too, for social emotional and mental health support.
Just to add one more, we've been a part of the S3 Academy, the Systematic Student Support Services. I may have messed the acronym up, and I shouldn't have, I should know that better than anybody. But part of that is not only having the student concern meetings for students who may be in crisis, but we're trying to transition to have that, those types of meetings about every single student. So our universal screener, the Desta Mini, is really going to help with that, where we have a conversation about every single kid in the building and where they fall on that. Because, and what that will do will allow us not to have, or we can try not to have any kid fall through the cracks, right? So they may not be presenting in a way that is alarming at first sight, but through discussion from the classroom teacher and adjustment counselor and possibly administrator, we'll know what's going on in these kids' life and hopefully be able to provide some support intervention before it gets to the point where there is a child or family in crisis.
Great.
So tonight, under your action items, it is the last action item, 21-81, number 2021, and the total amount of the budget, which is really the city portion of the budget, which is what the school committee votes on for the direct spending, not the indirect spending, is $63,300,000. So that vote will be coming up, 66, 66,300,000 for next school year, FY '22.
We were going to take that out of order, Mr. Stevens.
To make a motion that we take 21-81 out of order.
Second.
Motion made in second to take 21-81 out of order. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those vote. Aye as well.
Aye. Aye. I make a motion that we accept 21-81.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to adopt 21-81. Support the superintendent's recommendation for the 66,000, 66,300,000, FY, I wish it were 66,000, FY '22 School Department budget funded by the city appropriation. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And remotely as well. No in opposition, it is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, we have a few other action items. We have a couple donations, one from the Pittsburgh City Council for some flags, glow sticks, pinwheels, beach balls, valued at $300. That's the first donation. Then we have 120 reading books, K through 12, estimated at $1,076, from our friends and teachers from the Pittsburgh Education Association. Then we have the acceptance of a grant donation from the George R. Wallace Foundation, which really aligns to the hiring goals that we have going forward. This is more of a long-term investment, but Pittsburgh, like many school districts, is recognizing that we need to develop our own teacher workforce, and that starts really as early as, you know, in the middle schools, trying to identify students who are potentially interested in becoming educators. The $30,000 from the Wallace Foundation would be to support students who attend Pittsburgh State University with the goal of returning to Pittsburgh Public Schools to become teachers. That gift is $10,000 a year for three years, and the first installment will be made by June 30th of this year. Lastly, we have submitting a grant, the Evidence-Based Early Literacy Grant for $59,775. The Emergency Connectivity Fund, and that number is not known at this time, but I think we just need the approval to submit.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we bundle 21-77 through 21-80.
Motion made to bundle 21-77 up through and including 21-80. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Remotely as well.
Make a motion to approve 21-77 through 21-80.
Just want to say a word about item number 21, sorry, number 21-77, which is Marissa Fleming, counselor for the Ward Five, and Beth Walsh, counselor for Ward Six. And I know some other counselors worked really hard to gather all these items. They were originally destined for the Fourth of July Parade, and I ran into Marissa at, you know, at a store where she was buying stuff, 90% marked off, and I bought a bunch of stuff as well. So we were well-prepared for the parade that didn't happen, but I want to thank the city council for donating for students' immediate enjoyment. That is very cool.
Yeah, anytime you can lighten the purse strings, the purses of the city council, I'm always in, in very enthusiastic favor of that. Nicely done, thank you.
Do we have a second on the motion?
We need a second.
We need a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Walsh seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. Thank you. Before we adjourn, there's no need for executive session, incidentally. This is Adam's last, last school committee meeting. And Dr. Renda, thank you so much. We're, I'm not happy you're leaving, I'll tell you right now. I want to say, I want to say congratulations, certainly, but the school district you're going to is getting an outstanding superintendent. It was inevitable. And what the Superintendent Jokel suggested is, we leave you with a parting gift of being able to take your nameplate with you. See how magnanimous we are here? Isn't that wonderful?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, and I know there, again, the district that's, that's going to be utilizing your talents is going to be so much better off. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
We'll miss you.
Yeah.
Feeling is mutual.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to honor a couple of other folks who have been just of immeasurable help to our school committee. Judy Greenlee is up there on the screen, and Patty Pickert, who will be watching at home. You have kept our school committee on track, on time, informed, agended, and minuteed, and everything that we've needed. And there are two plants for your decks, one for each of you at Central Office, and then there's cards that we all sign. But we want to thank you guys because it is so important to have this support, and you have really done an outstanding job.
Thank you, Ms. Craig, for taking the initiative to do this for them. Thank you both, Ms. Greenlee and...
Patty.
And Patty.
Oh, the best.
Patty, I mean, my, can't do without her as well. Thanks, folks.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made, seconded, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.